The Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, December the 20th, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by a prayer from our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of mercy, whose unfailing love and faithfulness cover our sins, make us today instruments of your grace. Give us the wisdom to think before speaking and to say the right thing at the right time. May our actions so please you that even our enemies will live at peace with us. Guide our commissioners and county employees in their challenging work. Remind them that many counselors bring success. Help them also to remember that they can make plans, but you determine their steps. Teach us all that it is better to be patient than powerful, and it is better to have self-control than to conquer a city. Guide us by your light that we may reach the light that never fades. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Good morning to each of you and welcome to the Board of Commissioners. And for those that may be viewing online, we welcome you too. For those that may be in attendance this morning with us, if you will, please make sure that your cell phones are on vibrate or cutoff. We appreciate that. Commissioners, you have there for you, before you, your agenda. There are two items that I'd like to ask that we add to the agenda today for consideration. One would be 1D, which would be chairman's privilege. We would also ask that, under the closed session, that we would add a personnel item to it. Ms. County Attorney, do you have statute on that?
Yes, sir. I'll have those prepared for the motion for both of the reasons.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Are there any other items that you desire to add to the agenda or pull?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda stated. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Next would be the consent agenda. You have there before you the December 6, 2021 regular session minutes, tax releases and refunds, recreation, brick donation. Under recreation, you also have the warehouse grant. And then also, under recreation, you have an international paper foundation grant. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you desire to be pulled?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Commissioners and those in attendance this morning, on the chairman's privilege, our next item, we are very honored today to welcome the commanding officer of Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point, Colonel Huber, who is with us. We are, there are no words to show our appreciation for your service, sir, and for those of the men and women that serve our nation, and for our largest employer of our base there, for Craven County. There's so much to be appreciative of and for your service. Before you come forward, I'm going to turn it over to the county manager, and then you can come forward. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a great working relationship with Cherry Point. We've recently been going through some partnership discussions, which Colonel Huber's led down in Havelock. We're really excited about that. But today, he's here to make a special presentation to the board. So Colonel Huber, if you'll come to the podium, please, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Colonel Mike Huber, I'm the air station commander at Cherry Point. It's my honor to be here this morning. I appreciate you having me for a few minutes of your time. I know you have a busy schedule, so I'm not going to waste too much of your time. But what I do want to do is take this opportunity to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners here in Craven County for everything that you do to support Cherry Point. As many of you know, we were able to have an airshow in September. There were a number of things that were stacking up against us to try and prevent that airshow from happening, but my team, in concert with great community support, had a super plan put together. We put that plan up to leadership and essentially said, hey, we're ready to do this, to support the community, bring the community aboard the airstation, and we think we've got a great program put together. And leadership, in the face of all the challenges that we have, approved it, and so we were able to hold that airshow. We were just, happened to be recognized by the International Council of Airshows for three awards, well, two awards from the International Council of Airshows, and one from the U.S. Navy Blue Angels for Airshow of the Year, and also a community award that shows partnership between the airstation and the community. And we would not have been able to do it without the support of the community. And I think that this board is certainly part and parcel to that. And so this morning, I just want to take this opportunity to present you with this picture of the Blue Angels demonstration team and their new airplane that they flew this year. So too the Craven County Board of Commissioners, the Blues that were really our headline act and voted us the Military Airshow of the Year. So, thank you.
I'm going to ask, if you will, something we usually don't do, but I think, I'm going to ask all the commissioners, if you will, let's come to the front. If you will, stand in the middle and hold this. And I think this is a great honor, and we thank you for this.
Keep it on.
Oh, yeah.
Happy Christmas to you.
We appreciate it.
Jason, if I can make a statement?
Yes, please.
I don't know if you folks know this, but he is 29 years in the Marine Corps, and he'll be retiring this year. And he has purchased a home on Pollock Street. Will be moving right downtown, right where we, one of our neighbors. So that's exciting.
That's good. Any other comments by the Board of Commissioners? We really appreciate that. We do have a great working relationship with Cherry Point, and I thank the Commissioners that each of you have a correspondence there with Colonel Huber and others, and thank you for that, and also for our staff. We must keep that working relationship going. Next on the agenda this morning is the Craven Pamlico Regional Library Physical Year 2021 Annual Report. We're honored to have with us this morning several representatives from the regional library system. And I'm going to ask Ms. Catherine Clowers, if she will, to come forward. She's our regional library director. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Jones and County Commissioners, for allowing us to present today. I have Millie Sparks, our New Bern librarian, with us. She'll be operating our presentation when we get to that point. You should have received a copy of an annual report earlier to review. I'm not going to go over it. It's pretty lengthy, but I will hit some of the high points. As you know, we've all been going through a transition because of COVID, but the regional library system was also going through a transition as we became restructured from a 10-system, three-county library to a five-library system with two counties. It has gone very smoothly this past year. Operations have done real well. We had to downsize our administration with loss of funding, but we outsourced several of our resources, such as our technology, and it came out actually cheaper than when we had two to three employees working that area. We did not have to lay off anybody. The individuals were ready to retire, so we ended up just not replacing those positions and taking a full-timer and making him part-time as the Kellenberger Room, Victor Jones, most of y'all know him, as well as our tech services manager. As you know, our library system has three goals. Well, our main goal is being fiscally responsible. That is one of our goals. But our other three goals is providing resources and services to the general public, our patrons to make them better citizens for our counties, as well as to give them lifelong learning opportunities, and to support our nonprofits business and our academia here in our county. The second goal is to provide facilities that are comfortable and safe, not just safe from, you know, individuals, that might be negative, but safe from, and tripping hazards, but safe from pandemic. So we've been providing such things as pods, that you can go in and study two, three people. It's an enclosed, soundproof room, and people can go in there and they're not exposed to anybody else. That's for currently, as well as if the future pandemic hits, we'll be able to service our students that need to come in for Wi-Fi and not have them exposed to others. The third thing that we're trying to do is make sure that we have trained, professional, and happy staff at the Craven Pamlico Regional Library, because we want people dedicated to our county, and we've been very lucky to have that. We have staff that have been going through consistent training. As you may not be aware, prior to pandemic, the Craven Pamlico Regional Library system was not very virtually oriented. We're all in print and circulation, just a small collection. During the pandemic, the board actually approved funding to move from our fund balance to purchase additional electronic resources. And later on, we'll talk about what that impacted our community. So some of the highlights, we did outreach. We created a tech mobile. It was at no cost to the county systems. We had an Eagle Scout step up. He actually installed, so we can put a hotspot, and it transmits a pretty good radius, three or four, about a couple of blocks. But if there's big buildings, it blocks it. We just have currently applied with ECF funding to get hotspots that will do a whole football field. If we could get that funding, it will be able to transport that. One of our reasons to make a tech mobile was to get technology out. We've hit several small locations, like Duffy Field with it, to provide internet access to our students when they need it. But we also wanted to have it available for disasters. So if we go out and there's no electronic or technology, we can take the tech mobile to different places and pop it up so people can have contact with their families, as well as apply for FEMA and other services. We also take print materials. We have a wireless printer. We have computers. We set up a little mini lab so people can check out books, as well as print materials, and use the technology if they don't have the hardware to do it themselves at their homes. That has been very successful. The only drawback is weather. So we have awnings on the side, but they're not enclosed enough. But this has been great to take to festivals, and we've taken it to several locations, as I previously spoke about. We also helped with the 2020 census this year. We received a $5,000 grant to do programming for them. Since we couldn't do programming, we did a lot of virtual programming, and we did, we assisted with people outside, actually went outside of the facilities and helped people with registering for the census. Pamlico County, and I think it was Vanceboro, actually did in-house programming at one point where people came in, but they did it outside and had a festival. I know Pamlico registered 100 people, and I think it was 25 or 30 people at the Vanceboro to the census, trying to help that improve for us during the COVID. I know it was negatively impacted. Other highlights was that we also continued to work on making our catalog records better. It was difficult to search. That was improved. And now we have a library of things. We have cooking pans you could check out in different shapes. We have telescopes, high-powered, that'll actually see other galaxies you can check out. We have musical instruments that you can check out. We have saxophones, guitars, clarinets. They've been very popular. Trumpet was very popular. I don't know if I would have liked that as a mom, but that's okay. We also transitioned to a new email service provider that made us more efficient, installed firewalls so that we were more secure for any hackers. And we continued with providing digital student cards to our students. I don't know if you're aware, we provide a digital student card to every student in Craven and Pamlico County. The school system collaborates with us. They send us their student ID number and their first and last name. We have a, you know, a privacy contract between us, and then they get a virtual card. This virtual card allows them access, even if they have a other library card, that never collects fines, so they constantly have resources from home to do their work. We also provided training to educators and homeschoolers on our virtual resources, went into the classrooms and taught teachers. We ordered tumble books, which has lesson plans and tests, and we provided that to them, as well as to the homeschoolers. And there's other highlights on there that I'll let y'all review. One of the other things that I want you to look at is our numbers. We did digital material circulated with 60,000. That tripled over the past two years. Originally, before pandemic, we were only doing like 12,000, and now, and then when we were at 10 libraries, we were doing 30,000. We're only five libraries, and we're circulating 60,000 electronic resources to the public. Public computer sessions, and these are all a little skewed, because what you need to understand, during this period, most of our libraries were open part-time. They weren't open to the public. If they were open full-time, they were counting the people coming in, so it was limited access. But 16,536 public computer sessions, that means an individual comes in, they can come in numerous times that day, but they only count once, just so y'all are aware. 17,727 Wi-Fi sessions. We actually extended our Wi-Fi, so it covers most of all of our parking lots at the libraries, and it's on 24/7, so people can access it by pulling up in their car or sitting on benches outside. Most people stay in their car and use the internet outside. We had several people who worked day shifts and couldn't come in, and they would come to them. We answered 51,000 reference questions, and we had 259,000 website visits. Lots of programs going on. Obviously, we turned to virtual, but as soon as we could open up for in-house programs, we started with the summer reading program. So that also worked out. If you want to look at the financials, it gives you percentages of how we spent our money and how we received our money. For the first time last year, we received funding from some new municipalities. We received from Trent Woods, Havelock reinstated their funding, and New Bern and Craven County. This year, we've got Bridgeton, Trent Woods, and I'm not sure who else, but we have three in this area that are funding us. Very excited. And Havelock again. So very excited about that. In '21, we received $5,500 in grants, and we received $88,000 in e-rate grants. That funds all our Wi-Fi. We pay 20%, they pay 80% of our Wi-Fi and internet that we provide in the library system. We exceeded our 15,000 goal of donations and received $88,000 in donations for the Craven Pamlico Regional Library last year. This year, just to make y'all aware, we anticipate over $120,000 in grants, where 90,000 of it is non-matching. We also anticipate to exceed our goals of donations of 15,000 also. And I already spoke about donation circulation, but I do want to let y'all know that if you look, the circulation did go down last year of print materials. This is the box on the top of print materials, if you want to look at those. It did go down the last year, but again, circulation and e-resources. But if you look at our current circulation rates, everybody is either very close to receiving pre-COVID circulation or have exceeded it. Vanceboro has increased 49% in print material circulations. That includes technology as well as print. Co-City improved 28%. I have to give that to our new librarian there. She's been really well at working the public and going out and talking to them. And New Bern is at just below 2.7%. I would like y'all to be aware that statewide, most libraries are only at 65% of their circulation. We have, we are way ahead of the general libraries in the state. And then there's just some short stories here for y'all to review. Two of the grants that we received, one was TOPPS and SPOTS. TOPPS and SPOTS is a circulation grant of technology. We circulate hotspots. We, can you show them a hotspot? We circulate tablets, and we circulate Wi-Fi cameras. Right now, we've asked for more hotspots in our ECF funding that we're hoping to get. We did receive ECF funding, but we're not sure how much we're going to use of it. And the hotspots now have 20, an average of 22 holds on each hotspot, and we have 100 hotspots. So the demand is really needed out there. Vanceboro, Co-City, and Pamlico, they really need to increase their hotspot circulation. And we actually did a study where we drove around the county with a van, took all different hotspots from different vendors, and verified which ones worked the best in those locations that we purchased, what would actually work for the public. So we have AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile hotspots right now that we're circulating. We have the student, ECF is funding more student hotspots, and those hotspots will be limited. The ones for adults are 24-hour. The student hotspots are filtered, and they also have to only do academic in general. They can't go to social media. And they also begin at 7:00 in the morning and cut off at 10:00 at night, so they're not 24-hours like the adult. We want our young people to get some sleep, so they're prepared for their next day. The second grant we received, and we received 80,000 for those, 24 was with non-matching, and then 50 was with matching. And then we received a warehouse grant to help us with the hotspot funding also of 2,000. The second grant was a virtual reality grant, non-matching, and it was for $69,000, $68,000. We do this in our senior centers, as well as our special needs adults and special needs children. Ms. Sparks has been going to Easter Seals several times a month, doing it with different groups. We've gone to nursing homes. Virtual reality lets these people who are locked and isolated travel. They can do new experiences. We've had dementia patients that wouldn't participate in physical therapy move. We had a ballerina that had never, wasn't really interacting, and she actually, we put on Nutcracker, and she started doing her arms and moving around like Nutcracker. We had a non-verbal Easter Seal young man who did not participate in programming at all at Easter Seal, and Millie got him involved, and now he recognizes her. He's very excited. He participates, and he interacts with the other children participating in the program. So we're very excited about that program. We are doing programs, excuse me, in the library for the general public, and 15% of the participants in the general public that are coming have never visited our libraries before and are coming to experience virtuality, and 100% of them have done another service, either attended a technology or another program, or checked out a book that they would have never done before. So this program does a lot for the library. If you suffer promotion sickness, do not use the headphones, but you can put on the headphones, thank you, right now, and Ms. Millie's going to let you swim with dolphins. Everyone put on their headsets.
I have motion sickness.
She's got motion sickness.
You could, I don't.
And we're glad.
Can you take that out? We can hear you by the surprise. Trouble hearing you.
Everyone put on your headsets, and it's, the view is 360, so you can, you can turn your head and look around. Yes. Everything at a central left. You can adjust the headphones for sound, as well as visual. So we have autistic students that are using it, and if they have difficulty seeing, we can lower their sound on their phone system. We were nationally recognized for this, as we were the first library system to start this program in the nation. You can go to any library. We have two sets of headphones in the high press. They'll frame you. And we're, we're an organization that will give a little time and train you. And there's a variety of experiences. You can, you can do videos, or there are games. One of the popular Easter Seals games is I Spy. So it's a 360 room, and they're given objects to find, and then they blink twice, and they can find them. And so that was the one that the non-verbal student really enjoyed. If you'd like us to present this at any other program that you have, we're willing to come up with.
Pretty cool.
Do you have any questions for us?
Questions from the board.
Well, I would just like to thank Kat and also the head librarian at Vanceboro for what they've done up there. I think you've done a marvelous, great job.
Commissioner Liner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Kat, and I'd like to thank leadership personally. Everyone knows Jason is the chair of the regional library, and we've come a long way in the last 14 months since we've separated. We've got some issues still going on. We're well ahead of where we thought we would be, and we would not have done it without the leadership that he's provided and the team that he's put together. So I want to thank Kat and the chairman.
Any other comments? Well, ladies, we do thank you for what you're doing. You know, I think the sheet that shows the statistics speak for themselves, you know, to see libraries that, and that's what this Board of Commissioners had a lot of concerns about. You know, we had some libraries that were lagging behind, and because of the team effort by everyone, and that goes with the Board, also Board of Trustees, which Commissioner Liner serves on. A lot of good things have been put in place. We've got some growing pains.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I will admit that. We've still got some ways to go, but hey, we've come a long ways, and we're not looking back, we're looking forward, so.
Yes, sir. Definitely looking forward. Our goals next year, we actually did a survey, the general public wants 3D printing. They also, second was STEAM programming for our students, which is something that we're looking at. We just got approved to apply for a grant. That is also based on the rates. As you know, we're not doing as well in science, math, and reading, so we're hoping STEAM programs will assist them. And then the third was self-checkout. We included this, we did a survey with staff, and their top was 3D printing and self-checkout. So we'll be applying for grants in those areas based on the two studies that we did.
All right. Thank y'all for being here this morning.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you and to the staff of Craven County. Everybody's been so supportive, maintenance, IT, human resources, thank you for allowing us to assist them.
All right. You want to go ahead and collect these?
Yes, sir.
All right. Just in case you step out, we don't want to...
Just in case you step out, we don't want to hinder you. You're welcome to stay. The next item on the Board of Commissioners' agenda this morning is from Religious Community Services, a presentation, and we're honored to have with us representation from there, but definitely we have the executive director, Mrs. Zeb Huff. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. No one told me that I was going to be following virtual reality. I would have, I would have done something different, but good morning, Commissioners. Greetings to all those present. Merry Christmas. It's good to be with you this morning, and thank you for the opportunity to give a short update on RCS. At Religious Community Services, we have worked tirelessly this year to assist our neighbors experiencing homelessness, unemployment, food insecurity, and a lack of social support critical to building self-sufficiency. In the wake of natural disasters, a worldwide pandemic that stretched far longer than any of us could have imagined, and economic uncertainty, the demand for our work has only increased. In two thousand twenty-one, RCS made it a priority to ensure that all of our essential services remained intact to see the pandemic through. It was our hope to meet people where they were and to continue our mission's legacy to meet the needs where they are needed the most. Thanks to partnerships like the ones that we have with the county and many other in our very generous community, we did just that. Our work, however, is far from over. In North Carolina, we are the, we have the tenth highest rate of food insecurity in the nation. In New Bern and the surrounding communities, at least sixty-three thousand people do not have access to healthy and nutritious food choices to support an active and healthy lifestyle. These individuals and families must make the difficult choice between the quality and quantity of the foods they put on their table. The number represents our neighbors, over eighteen thousand of whom are children, and more than sixteen thousand are seniors who built this county and are now living at or below the poverty level. Over a twelve-month period, sixty-four, sixty-four hundred families came to RCS for emergency pantry assistance, where they received a fourteen-day supply of food. We also took this assistance outside our four walls with our newest initiative called Operation Outpost. This initiative allowed us to serve an additional five thousand individuals. Second need that we've seen in our community is housing insecurity. The percent of homelessness in North Carolina is around thirteen percent. There is no way, however, to measure those individuals experiencing housing insecurity that are transient or undocumented. What the data does tell us is that on any given night in our community, nearly one hundred residents, that's individuals who live here, work here, eat here, we call neighbors, one hundred of our neighbors don't have a secure and safe place to sleep. As the only homelessness service in New Bern, RCS expanded the programs to offer community and housing insecu, sorry, it expanded the program. It offers the community and housing insecure neighbors. We now have not only our emergency temporary assistance that helps prevent homelessness and our emergency crisis shelter, which we've run for near forty years in, in New Bern on George Street. We also opened a veterans residence, which is a short-term transitionary housing solution for our veterans who have served our nation to help them launch into self-sufficiency. With that, we have a four-unit family residence that does the same thing. In both of our residences, our, our individuals that we're serving have the opportunity to stay at a minimum for ninety days and up to eighteen months so that they can truly launch into self-sufficiency. Throughout these four distinct homeless prevention and housing services, RCS assisted nearly four hundred families with mortgage, rent, and utility assistance, and we also provided a total of seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four nights of shelter in two thousand At RCS, we've experienced a shift to client-centered services. It is no longer simply about food, clothing, rent, and utilities. We see food, shelter, education, and preventive services linked so that families and individuals have the means for self-sufficiency and dignity. Our goal is to help individuals help themselves. This was done as we provided seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five individual case management hours between October twenty twenty and October twenty twenty-one, and November twenty twenty-one, excuse me. This shift has represented a great deal of change for the organization. There's been a lot of strain on our brand-new campus and pressure on our overall budget. To make our program model a sustainable one, there are two very significant and one-time things needed. The first is a restocking of our warehouse food. Twenty twenty-one saw our limited supply of donated food almost depleted. For those of you who've come through our warehouse, you will know that on any given day, those shelves are stocked for a three-month supply should our community need it. This, throughout the last year, we saw that depleted to where we had entire three tiers empty because the demand was so high. The ability to put stable, safe food on our shelves would relieve a great deal of unbudgeted financial stress that the pandemic has caused. Additionally, it would help us to continue to offer expanded services to individuals and families in a way that builds supportive communities, engages people holistically, and empowers permanent life change. A specific portion of the budget is budgeted at twenty-eight thousand dollars and is detailed in an itemized attachment that you all should have received. The second portion of this request is an infrastructure request. As you know, the more you utilize anything, the more wear and tear it sees. The truth is that before two thousand eighteen, our campus never saw the amount of demand that we have experienced since Florence. Further, as we have built back our services, we are finding that our hard assets are being strained. These include upfitting our warehouse with better and stronger shelving, vehicle replacements for our fleets that run six days a week, and replacing our dated operational equipment. This portion of the budget is budgeted at fifty thousand dollars and is currently being supported by partner funders such as International Paper as well as private contributors. As we realize the magnitude of this project, I had the pleasure of having a conversation with our county manager, and we spoke at length of how this project would help RCS with sustainability and a chance for impact, and the chance for the impact that these dollars could have. I'm grateful for the opportunity to partner once again with the county on this project, and thank you for your consideration in this matter.
All right, Ms. Huff, thank you. All right, Commissioners, you've heard the presentation this morning. Are there any questions from the board? Vice Chair Booker.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment that I want everybody to, to hear. I, I know that, that you rely on donations big time, people bringing food primarily and clothing. I, I belong to an organization that every year at, at the end of the year, we make several donations, and one was to RCS and, and has been. It's the Local Antique Car Club. And I called Zeb because one of the people in the club said, well, we should go shopping and get food and take it over there. I said, I don't think so. I think they would rather have cash. And I verified that with Zeb, that they really can do a better job of buying what they need if we provide them with cash to do that. So I'm just mentioning to our community, anybody watching this today, you want to lower your tax bill, make a donation, make one of your donations at the end of the year, which many of us do, to RCS, and do it in cash, not, don't go out and buy hand goods. They can do that and do it more efficiently than we can do it as individuals. So I'm just encouraging everybody to include RCS in your end-of-year donations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, I, I thank Zeb for being here this morning. We had a couple of great meetings since summer until now, and just want to relay kind of from a staff perspective what it's like dealing with RCS. We consider one of our key partners when it comes to our Health and Human Services divisions. Quite frankly, if Zeb wasn't there and his team, there's lots of things that we would end up taking on from a DSS perspective, right? So everything he's talking about, the prevention side, is exactly what we try to do as well because when it becomes a crisis, it's much more expensive and much more time-consuming. So anything we can put forward to help on the prevention side, which I'm glad to see your model go into that. I can't think of a time that I picked up the phone and called Zeb or one of his staff they haven't jumped right on and been part of the team and tried to help, so thank you for that. Zeb, I want to be clear, your ask of the board on the second part, the infrastructure part is twenty-five thousand, is that correct?
That's correct. The county would provide twenty-five on the food side and twenty-five on the infrastructure side, and the rest of the funds have been procured through other grants or private contributions.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, sir. Do you need a motion that we approve fifty thousand transferred to RCS?
All right.
So I make that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second for fifty thousand dollars to be given to RCS. Upon the request is the discussion on the motion. County manager, the only thing I would ask is, you know, we have, there's been some inquiries from citizens about the ARC money that has come into Craven County and what the county's plans to do with, with those funds. I think you stated last meeting and did it very eloquently, you know, we're still waiting on assistance from the federal government to tell us exactly how those funds can be spent.
Yes, sir.
But this area in which we are talking about today, there is a possibility that, that there's, we might be able to take and pull that money and reimburse the county.
Yes, sir.
Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just, I would hate to give you a hundred percent certainty this morning.
Understand, but there, I said possibility.
But we will, if, if it's available, we will do that.
Okay. Commissioners, you heard that. All right, we have the motion in a second on the floor. Here, no more discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, call and roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Zeb, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, and I would be remiss in my duties if I didn't introduce Candace Parker, who is our development manager, and, and she helps me put together all these presentations. So if I did a good job, it was totally her fault, and if I did a bad job, it was totally her fault. Since you guys all said yes, good job, Candace. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas to you guys.
Merry Christmas. I would like to say just one thing before he leaves. I, I would like to commend you for your positive presence in the community, letting us know that you're here and what the program is about, expressing the needs and the availabilities to the citizens of Craven County. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Have a good one.
We will.
Thank you. Commissioners, next on the agenda, we have the appointments to the boards and committees. In your agenda packet and attachment four, you have there the commissioner appointments for January two thousand twenty-one through, well, it should be.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, but this, this was showing, I reckon, from our last year, correct?
This is showing what's in current service.
Okay, all right, I got you. I have talked to many of you, and everybody has agreed that you would pretty much would like to stay on the same boards, committees you're on for another year. The only exception I'm going to ask today is that we not considered the Military, Civilian, and Community Council today. Every other board would be, with everybody's agreement, would be appointed today. The clerk would send notification to those boards and let those respective committees know that you were reappointed for another term, and I'd ask to hold off on this one until our next meeting. Here, no objection? All right, thank you. All right, departmental matters. First, we have planning Craven County Schools Generator Project Bid Award, Mr. Don Bumgardner. Mr. Chad Strong, good morning, gentlemen.
Back in July, we went through the process of soliciting bids for the installation of five generators at the JW Smith Elementary School. That was one. Tucker Creek Elementary, Avlock was the third one. West Craven Middle School was the fourth, and Arthur Edwards Elementary was the fifth. These are some grant monies that were provided by Golden Leaf as resiliency measures against future damages that can occur from the lack of conditioned space within the schools. What happens is if there's a loss of power, the conditions are very present for the presence of mold. So that's, that was a big problem we experienced in the past at the, the different facilities, some worse than others. At the time that we bid the projects in July twenty-seventh, the actual dollar amount of the bids for these emergency backup generators was one million eight hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Because the bids came in greater than the estimated cost that we had had, the costs were approximately eighteen months old at the time, and we were also going through situations with issues in the supply chain and the availability of labor, so it pushed the bids much higher than what they had been estimated to be. However, the county did move forward to do a partial award for two generators based on the amount of money that we had available from Golden Leaf, and we moved forward after that to talk with the school board, Board of Education, to see if there was any funding available in their budgets or in their fund balances that could assist in putting these generators in. They did have some money that they had received from Hurricane Florence, and as a result of it, they have provided those funds to the county for these three additional generator, emergency generators. And at this time, we have received those funds, and we're asking the Board of Commissioners to accept the one million eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and six hundred and seventy-one cents from the Board of Education, also approve a project ordinance, budget amendment, and award Coastline Construction a change order for the additional three generators, as Coastline Construction is the original bidder we awarded the other two generators to, and they also were the lowest bidder when we bid the project back on the twenty-seventh of July. So this time, we're just requesting the board accept the money from the Board of Education, approve a project ordinance, budget amendment, and change order for the additional three generators to Coastline Electric.
All right, what's desirable.
Some, some.
All right, I have a motion in a second. You've heard the four items there that are in the motion. Any discussion? Here, no, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank both of you, Don, you and Chad, for what you've done. It's been a long journey, but hopefully it's coming to completion. Thank you.
Sometimes the hardest part is the installation.
There you go. All right, next, Commissioners, we have recreation. We have with us representatives from Parks and Rec today, Mr. Billy Wilks. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Everybody's doing well. I've got with me Mark Seymour, who is our assistant director, and as mentioned earlier, if there's a nice-looking presentation, it's usually not me that's responsible for that, so we thank him for his work on this. But I've got three agenda items for your consideration today, the first of which is project updates. As you can see, we've been busy this fall. We had a Creekside Waterfront Park project that we were doing, a rehab on, and then also a Rocky Run Playground project that we were doing as well. So both ended in November, and I wanted to bring those to your attention because it involved both grant funding and county funding, and both are complete now and open to the public. Let's start with the, the waterfront access grant that we received from North Carolina. You can see the pictures there. It is a beautiful addition to Creekside at the waterfront. We redid all the boards. We put in fishing. We put in fishing cutouts. I'll kind of see if I can point at them for you here. So right here is our new kayak launch. Right here is the safety railings for, we have a lot of youth that just kind of walk along the boards. We really wanted to make that a safer option for them. We have fishing cutouts like that, new benches that were installed as well. All of that was done as part of a North Carolina Waterfront Access Grant in the amount of $88,500 with a county match of $29,500. And finally, when wood prices went up, the Harold Bait Foundation stepped in and helped us with $72,000 for a total of $125,200. We're excited about this project. We've already seen quite a bit of new activity out there that we like. One place I didn't mention, you really can't see all the way down at the end. Let's see if I can point down in this area. We have an aluminum walkway that provides access as well. So we've got access, safety. We provided a new kayak launch and the fishing cutouts. All were part of that project. We're excited to have it open for the public and hopefully folks will enjoy it for many, many years. It was about 20 years old and in need of rehab. That's the first one. The next slide shows the Rocky Run Playground Project. Real proud of this park. It's come a long way since 2017. And I thank the board for seeing that and knowing that we needed to upgrade. We started with a shelter in 17. We added, let's see, we added the new climber in 19, no, excuse me, yeah, 19. The basketball court was redone in 19 as well. You see that back there. But this is sort of the finishing touch on that. So what we did with that project was we had staff that went in and essentially handled the demo for the project. We had a contractor come in and put the playground equipment in. And then we came back and sort of brought it all together. Our park staff's doing a great job. And what they did is sort of bring all the pieces together in one big area. So now you've got a climber, a swing set, and a brand new piece of playground equipment, all in this one section. This is, this park's come a long way. And it was part of a Bait Foundation grant, the amount of $35,000 that the county matched. So a total of $70,000 project, all done with the help of our park staff and completed the end of November. So we're also excited to have that finished as well. And since both of these don't require any motions or anything, entertain any questions if anybody has any on these projects. It's just mainly for information. I wanted to sort of follow up with you guys on these two projects because they were very big for us to complete.
Commissioner Smith?
The items in the air that are semi-trangle, what are they?
These right here?
Yes.
These are, provides what's called, it's called shadow play. And it, when the sun beats down on it, it sort of moves the shadows around. And it's called, it's part of what playgrounds companies call shadow play, which is kind of neat. It's really neat when the sun's out. You can kind of see some of it and hear all the shadows kind of coming off the sun there. It sort of provides a unique little feature for playgrounds. Doesn't provide a ton of shade, a little bit maybe, but it's more for the shadow play.
Any other questions? It's a lot different from when I was a child. All I had was a swing. We had monkey bars. You had monkey bars? Yeah.
You know, with.
And we survived.
That's, well, there are some pieces that I'm surprised we survived on.
There's some concrete, too.
Merry-go-alls that were rusty and all kinds of things that I played on. But nowadays, we want to provide a safe space. But we also got to be creative because we're trying to get kids to get away from playing with electronics and all that. We want them out of the park. We want them playing, enjoying themselves and getting fit and active. And some of the things that the playground companies come up with will amaze you. We thought this was a little, Mark and I walked this thing. We've got to play on everything, you know, make sure that everything's like it should be. And we did with this one and we were like, man, that's a drop off. And then we found out that that's exactly how it's supposed to be. It's actually supposed to be fun and creative and make you think before you do something. So it's, it's fun to be a part of seeing a new project kind of happen. But that's.
The only other thing I want to say before we move on to the next item. I think for our citizens that are here and listening, Billy and you and your staff have done an awesome job in trying to seek out grants to save the taxpayers a lot of money. And we've seen that with this park, with Creekside, others. And we thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions on this? All right, hear none?
I think we need a board for the Recreation Center and I want to be on it so I can test the equipment.
We welcome you anytime. And so, yeah, it is fun to see new equipment and fun to try it out as well. So, all right.
All right, next item.
Okay, so our next item is a request for the Harold Bait Foundation Grant. So we, again, are looking at grant sources and trying to come up with what's next. And Creekside Park, I know you all have been there. It really is a park where we have all kinds of folks walking and running. And, I mean, we see strollers, dogs. We've got the Humane Society across the street from us. And we are there walking central for all dogs, small and large. And we also have strollers. We have, you name it. We see a little bit of everything. But we do see folks with mobility needs as well that come to our park that are rehab patients or just need to find a place to get out. And it really excites us when we see folks that really need the spaces we have. So our walking trail that we're trying to add, I'll talk a little bit about that, is .36 of a mile. Well, I'm going to kind of point out to you guys on this little screen back here, you'll see the red. The red is what we're trying to add. So when you see the oval trail, that's already existing. That's a quarter of a mile trail. The blue is already existing. So we have stopped at that point where the blue stops. And now we want to connect what is the rest of the trail so that these areas in here, park staff, also a scout project and some other things, we've kind of gone through and actually cleared all of those trails. So you've got wooden trails through there, natural trails, which we're excited about. You can walk on grass, you'll walk on asphalt when you first start the trail. This red portion of the trail would be .36 of a mile. It would be hard crushed asphalt, which is accessible. We would have it packed down. So if anybody had mobility needs, they'd be able to access this portion of our trail as well. Because we simply want folks to have that ability. So all in, if we tie this trail together, we'll have a two mile walk through Creekside. You'll get to see everything, pretty much, the middle of the park, the waterfront, the trees and woods, the soccer fields, the baseball fields. It all needs to be tied into one trail. Mainly, and another big thing is it gets folks off the road. We have a lot of folks walking up and down the roads and it kind of scares me just a little bit when I see that and there's a lot of traffic. So what we're trying to do is provide an avenue where folks can kind of make their way through Creekside Park. So our request today is that Harold Bait Foundation's been wonderful in granting us a lot of grants over the years. And in this case, they've granted us $34,000, $17,000 of which goes to youth funding for all the leagues in Craven County that need an extra hand. The additional $17,000 would go towards this trail. And that's the portion in which we're asking for a match. So we're asking for the county to match the $17,000 grant, allow us to receive the grant, and then provide this facility for the citizens of Craven County. Our timeframe would be January, February is when we would like to start this project. And then that way, before the spring, we can be ready to go for all the walkers and dog walkers and all of our fun that happens at Creekside.
All right, what's desired of the board?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the grant of $17,000 and then the match of another $17,000, which will come out of fund balance. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to thank Billy for what he's been done for the constituents of this community, but also for the future people who want to move here. I think it's a very great job.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, and number C, potential new park.
Yeah, so we've got a potential new park. And I can't tell you, this gets our staff pretty much more excited than anything when we talk about the potential for facilities that we can add to this community. And as Commissioner Mark mentioned, I think one of the things that folks, when they're moving here, they want to know about schools. They want to know what are your parks looking like? How beautiful are they? What are the opportunities for that type of thing? So we are blessed in Craven County to have several parks. Both the, us and of course, the city of New Bern-Havlock as well have parks. So there are a lot of opportunities. One of the most requested facilities and activities for us are trails, walking trails, biking trails, water access. All of those things we hear about all the time. And to be honest with you, the requests have just gone up and up and up since we've had this pandemic. So we started talking to the Coastal Land Trust early this year, just about the possibility of what kind of trail opportunities are out there for our, our community. And one thing that happened, just sort of out of the blue, was they started talking about 100 acre track or parcel of land they were going to buy in, or at least put an offer in, in the summer. So this was happening at the same time we were having the discussions about what we can do to try to get folks out in the community a little bit more. So the great thing was in November 1st of this year, they closed. Now the Coastal Land Trust owns that 100 acre track. And I'm going to sort of point it out to you. So if you're looking back here, this was the new track. That was just over 100 acres. Well, they already owned these two parcels of land. So if you throw all of this together, all of a sudden, there's 171 acres of land. And so it's a beautiful piece of property. Obviously, I've walked it several times. And I love the fact that it has creek access, you know, and I'll go through some of the variables on this park. But it is, it's a potential diamond, honestly, for what we have. So if you go to the next slide there, let's see what we've got here, just the discussion points a little bit. Number one, the proximity to large population. Well, inside of about five miles, you've got about 10,000 people. And it's not getting smaller in that area. I mean, there are housing developments going up all along Old Airport Road. It's amazing to me just how many folks are going to be in that area. So this happens to be at the very end of Old Airport Road. And let's see if I can kind of, would you go back one slide for me, Steve? See if you can do that. Sort of looking at the property, there's your Old Airport Road and the county line. It sort of kind of comes together in this little area. So it's at the very end of Old Airport Road, right across from a subdivision called Bluewater Rise. And Steve, if you go back to the next slide, the connectivity by water to Creekside is real cool as well. And we've tried it. So we know that you can get there by kayak. It's about a six mile ride, which opens up the possibility of programs and things like that that our staff could provide for the community. We already do kayak classes. Now we can do paddles and you could be on one park and you could go to the other park, which is a really neat part of that as well. The availability of part of grants. So part of is Parks and Rec Trust Fund. I don't think that I've ever seen as much money in the Parks and Rec Trust Fund as we're going to see in the next two years. I think we're, local funds are going to be about 31 million that can go towards Parks and Rec departments. And some of you probably know that Parks and Rec Trust Funds have funded all of our three major parks. So Creekside Park received a part of fund, West Craven Park did, as well as Latham Whitehurst Nature Park. So all three of those parks have been successful in getting part of grants. So that puts a little pressure if we do apply because we would want that to happen. So the good part about that is with the land donation, the county does not need to provide a match. So the donation is going to be, exceed well over the 500,000 mark. So we're going to be at, I think the, basically, the last piece of property was valued at about 1.2 million. And then we've got the two additional that aren't even a part of that. So we're going to well exceed the $500,000 that we would need to match that. So using the land as a match and going after anything that's project specific, there aren't going to be hardly any costs as it relates to upfront costs for the county to incur. It is a great partnership. And the part I want to talk about is how this, these things sort of work out. So Coastal Land Trust, North Carolina Coastal Land Trust's been a great partner with us. They were a partner with the Latham Whitehurst Nature Park. And they want to be a partner with us on this project, but also Bass Pro Shops. We had to provide, the county would have to provide $100,000 as part of this turnover from the Coastal Land Trust to Craven County. Bass Pro Shops stepped up and agreed to the $100,000 donation. So this was all happening at the same time that they essentially bought Hatter shots and they were looking for a project. So they've agreed to essentially cover the county's portion of that, which makes that also a nice partnership. And then, of course, the areas to walk, water access, and we've mentioned are among the most requested amenities from our facility. So I think we've just got numerous positives with this project, so much so that it's going to cost, the amount that's going to cost the county will be negligible. And then you may ask, well, what's the going cost each year on the Latham Whitehurst Park? I could see one of you asking that. Well, we just looked at that recently and it's basically around $8,000 a year. That's how much we spend on just upkeep of the nature park that we currently have. So your going cost is not going to be that much going forward as well. So that's what our request from you guys would be, just to seek the part of grant, which there's a lot of things we have to do between now and May to make that happen. And then the second thing would be, once, you know, the deed is offered to Craven County, would you be willing to accept that deed so that we can move forward with a park?
Okay. Jack, what, do you want an official vote?
Yes, sir. If I could just comment for a second, I think Billy did a great job. This is one of those opportunities that, you know, came out of nowhere, Billy, when Coastal Land Trust approached you. We just had the opportunity to partner with Johnny Morris and Bass Pro Shop for the match. Again, $8,000 a year to add in 171 passive recreational acreage, which we know, Billy, and you said last, that's the most requested thing you get each year from citizens is more walking trails, mountain biking trails. Even though we don't have hills, it's still on wood, I guess, and that makes it different. And just general being outside. We know that COVID, we've seen higher usage in our parks. We've seen higher usage in our current nature park. This would just add another opportunity for folks to go. All you got to do is ride down Old Airport Road and see the growth and see the need for something like this out there.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions before we entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve this based on the nature park out at Broad Creek Road. And it's getting plenty of people going to it. And I walk it every once in a while.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the, as it is stated in your board action, permission to proceed with this project and include applying for a PARTF grant and accepting the deed for the North Carolina Coastal Land Trust. All right, discussion, Commissioner Liner?
Just to make sure everybody understands, that PART, part of grant is up to $500,000. And we got a great shot at that because we're matching it over a million dollars worth of land opportunities. So we've done it before with the Whitehurst property and everything else. But I think my, I'll salute to you, Billy, for getting with the Coastal Land Trust and their people. We've got, we've got people in this community that still serve on that board. So we should thank them for pushing this forward and they've been good partners with us.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
My question may not be quite appropriate. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. At the same time, I'm wondering what are the plans? You mentioned future investment and future opportunities. And I'm wondering about the other part of the county, you know, the other side of, because, you know, we're doing a lot in that particular area, which is wonderful. And I'm not discounting that as something that we should not do. I think that we need to look further in other areas at the same time.
Yes, ma'am. And I will say our staff is excited when any new opportunity arises. This one sort of hit us square in the head. And it wasn't based on the location, it was just based on the availability. And so that's kind of what that happened. But, you know, future parks would be really at your discretion, honestly. We love to plan parks. This is part of my job that I would absolutely love to entertain at any point.
Mr. Chair, in the hollow community there, we have a park there.
Yes, sir.
But it's not owned by Craven County. It's owned by the hollow development. Is there any way in the future that we can possibly turn it over to the county?
Mr. Chairman, you'll need to address that.
Yeah, if you will.
Commissioner McCabe, and Mr. Hodges is here and he can certainly speak to this with Billy, too. But at budget time, we looked at, and the board spent a lot of time talking about options. I know Mr. Hodges and Mr. Wilks have been looking at different opportunities in the Township Five community, whether it's that location or a new location to develop a recreational area there. Gene, I think you've had some good conversations so far. Nothing's set in stone yet, but you hope, your goal is to have something this year, try to identify a site. Billy, develop a plan for that site, start having some community conversations about what's needed there, and then move it forward. So does that help, Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, yes.
Any other comments, discussion? All right, hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Billy. Appreciate it, buddy. Have a good day.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, next we have Sheriff Chip Hughes, who will be here to present some budget amendments. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Chair. Commissioners, this morning, I've got three things I want to bring before you. In working very closely with our legislators in Eastern North Carolina, my office was able to secure a grant in the amount of $250,000 for emergency response equipment. And once the budget was signed into law, that, that grant went into effect. And looking at emergency response equipment, I have three things for your consideration this morning. One is the purchase of nine millimeter carbine weapons for my road deputies. At this time, any rifles or carbines that my deputies have are currently their, their personal ones. And we have been in a number of situations where these could have come in handy for us when we have had to meet with likewise harm being brought toward my deputies. So I'm looking to purchase 35 nine millimeter carbines along with the necessary optics and straps that would go with those vehicles. That would be my first request, sir.
All right, what's your desire to the board?
I would make a motion.
Suck it up. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $49,945. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, B.
Chairman, the next one will be for the purchase of four 2022 Dodge Ram 1500 four-by-four pickups. These vehicles, we're looking at that due to the extreme shortage we have and the number of vehicles we have, over 150, 175, and 200,000 miles within our fleet that do need to be replaced. This would give me four more four-wheel drives on the road. These would be, one will be put in Animal Protective Services, and the other three will be put in the Patrol Bureau. Even though we in order these now, we're still looking at a lengthy time period before the vehicles would come in.
All right, what's your desire to the board?
May I comment on this one?
Yes.
Sorry. Do you want to go ahead and do the motions?
All right, we got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, County Manager?
I worked with the sheriff, and we spent some time talking about this. I, I think one of the good things about this he didn't say was, this is for vehicles he will not request in next year's budget.
Correct. Yes, sir.
So grant money was able to provide some relief to the Commissioners to come next year.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Further discussion on the motion. Here none. You see the budget amendment in the amount of $141,837. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and C.
Chairman, the final one is for the upfitting of these four pickup trucks that we will look whenever we get them. The emergency equipment that will be put on them, the cages, the markings, lighting equipment, radios, that sort of thing.
All right, Commissioners, what's your desire?
I have a motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Question, Chip. What, what color will these vehicles be? Do we have a choice?
They will be, yes, sir. They will be the same color as my fleet vehicles. The, I think it's granite.
Dark gray.
Yes, sir.
All right, other questions? Here none. This is a budget amendment in the amount of $48,555. Madam Clerks, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Chair, if you've got anything you want to share with us this morning?
Yes, sir, a couple of things. Deputy Bellingham has come back to Eastern North Carolina.
Mm, that's good.
That we're very thankful. He's in Greenville. He's going to be at Vitin for quite some time. He is staying off-site in a place that is able to house individuals that are, have limited mobility. But he is going to be continuing to go through a lot of physical therapy and rehabilitation. Still thoughts and prayers with him. You know, we're, we're hoping at some time within the near future, he'll be back out at my office in some form of capacity. He's still very high spirited. But once again, this is a very long game. The community, this county, has been extremely supportive. Debbie Hodges has been fantastic to work with, and I can't thank her enough for what she's done. This is, she's literally on the phone with my people and talking with us every day about it. So, Jack, if you'd please pass my sincere thanks along to her.
Chip, on that subject, I know there've been a number of fundraisers to support his needs, his family needs, et cetera. Where are we there? Do we, are we in decent shape as far as the money's needed? Do we need to do more? What, what's the situation there?
So I, I think we are in good shape. Right now, you know, in working with Debbie and other entities, we're trying to figure out exactly what will be covered by certain things, like workman's comp, what is not. And then, of course, family expenses of, of having his family here with him. So we do think we're in good shape. Once again, the, the community has just been overwhelmingly supportive. But we don't know exactly in this long game what all it's going to entail. You know, we're, we're looking at, he's going to have to have a special place to live. It can't be just a regular apartment or house. Once again, the vehicle has to be outfitted for his use. So there's a lot of things that we're looking at, and once we figure out what all's covered, then we'll have a little better idea of where we stand. But I can tell you, like, our VA, a lot of those organizations, because he is a veteran, has, has really stepped up and said, hey, here's what we can provide. Something, you know, like a ramp at his house. So, but we don't know exactly right now what the long game's going to entail.
I'm sure you'll keep us posted.
Absolutely.
If anything, we need to do as a county. I know there's been a bunch of people that have stepped up and put fundraisers on and so on. It's, it's, it's great, great to see our community respond like.
It is. We, we certainly have a county and a community that supports public safety and law enforcement, and for that, I'm forever grateful. Also, with the upcoming holiday, Christmas and New Years, there will be, I will have a lot of my deputies on the road. It is one of the most heavily traveled holidays, the Christmas, and then that week between Christmas and New Years. So you'll see any presence of our people out there. We're also partnering up with New Bern and our local municipalities to make sure some of these, our, our stores are secure, not only in the county, but in the city of Havlock and New Bern also. That's just an ongoing partnership we have. And we'll also be doing some, taking children shopping for Christmas. That's a take-a-kids shopping event that we partnered up with our former chief in Havlock, but we're, we're continuing it on even in his absence. So thank you all for your support, and I hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a safe one.
Merry Christmas, Sheriff. Any questions for the sheriff? Thanks for what you're doing. Appreciate you. All right, next we have on the agenda ineligible charges for the E-911 Fund. Mr. Craig Warren, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. I have for you this morning one budget amendment for the E-911 Fund. There were some ineligible charges that were incurred in that fund. So each year we file, the Craven County submits a cost report to the state E-911 Board for all eligible charges, or charges that we believe to be eligible in the operation of the county's 911 call center. Those eligible charges to the fund include items such as directly aid in the dispatch and response to the 911 calls, software such as computer aided dispatch, in-car mapping, and equipment replacements, and for the backup site at, at City of New Bern. In the review of our fiscal year 2020 cost report, the 911 Board, E-911 Board determined that there were charges of $9,025 that were ineligible. These ineligible, ineligible charges were related to annual software maintenance, maintenance costs for law enforcement apps, applications that don't really facilitate the 911 call, and they were inadvertently charged to this fund. So during that review process, those were determined, in order to close out the report, they must be reimbursed to the 911 Fund. So in your agenda packets, you have a budget amendment that is appropriating $9,025 from the general fund balance to repay the 911 Fund for those charges.
All right, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $9,025. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I always take the opportunity, and I'm sorry for chiming in so much this morning, but this is a board that mitpicks, and over the years, we've done this before. And I know Mr. Warren's too nice to say it, but it comes down to, we bought a computer two years ago, and they didn't believe that a 911 operator knew Microsoft Word. So we had to actually pay them back because it came preloaded on the computer. I'm not sure you can really buy a computer without some of the things they want taken off. It's, it's a mystery to us because this money's collected by Craven County citizens on their cell phone bill. This, while they may not agree, is part of the 911 call, is part, is part of the emergency response. This is what's in the sheriff deputy's car. It's the way that they're able to get the call, and we know where they're at. Who knows why? It's, it's sort of frustrating to us, but it's not, not changing. I got Chad and Don over there shaking their head because they work in this fund, too, and they know how ridiculous it can be. But that's, that's all I got to say.
All right, any other discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is appointments. Commissioners, you have there before you the pending appointments. Are there any nominations for any of those? Here none, we will move to current. On the current this morning, you have the JCPC, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Mr. Scott Murphy, he's the Faith Community Representative. His term has expired.
And at this point, he's dropping off.
He is dropping off, okay?
Yeah, no communication.
All right, so we will defer that one then to our next meeting. The next would be Ms. Marissa, who serves as a Health Representative, to be moved to the vacant seat as she is no longer at the Health Department. So she's just going to be swapping seats, all right? Do I have a nomination?
I nominate her.
Okay, we have a nomination. Are there any additional nominations from the floor? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be Nikisha Rogers. You have an application in your agenda packet. She seeks appointment to fill the vacated Health seat.
I'd like to nominate her.
Okay, we have the nomination. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be the Fire Tax Commissioners Board for Township 3, Fort Bonmore, Mr. Jason Simpson, who seeks reappointment. I would ask the board, if you would, to reappoint him. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, he will be accepted by acclamation. And then you have the EMS services here for the Medical Community Rep seat. You've received no feedback, so you want to defer this one then to the next? Okay, we will defer that one. All right, next will be County, and then you see the upcoming terms expiring. Please take note of those. Next, we have the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Ari Grady. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I have two items for the board's consideration this morning. Both involve real estate acquired by the county through the tax foreclosure process. Both are initial offers on that type of real property, and both are subject to the upset bid process and final confirmation by this board after the upset bid process. The first parcel is located on Old Brick Road in New Bern. It's a parcel ID number of 10359002. We have an offer in the amount of $2,200. The original cost of foreclosure and the delinquent taxes totaled $1,116.05, and the tax value is $13,500. I do recommend that the board adopt a resolution approving this transaction and putting it out for upset bids.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for parcel number 1-035-9002. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, the second parcel is also located on Old Brick Road with a parcel ID number of 1035037. We have an offer in the amount of $1,800. Past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure originally totaled $1,747.94. The tax value of the property is $12,000. As with the other parcel, I recommend the board accept this offer and put it out for upset bid.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for parcel number 1-035-037. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report, and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, sir. Thank you. All right, County Managers' Report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Craig, we're going to do your item first. Usually, and I know the Commissioners will appreciate this, Craig is usually considered the Grinch around here at Christmas, as most finance officers are. But he's brought you a Christmas present this morning, which is the audit. It is our annual audit that has been completed per board policy. We're to give you that audit two weeks before it's presented formally by the auditors. So this will be on your next agenda on January the 3rd. We also do that at a night meetings to the public. We'll be here to participate in that process. This is a big step for Craig. This is sort of a big thing in his list every year to get done right, right around Christmas. He did a great job with it this year, he and his staff. He's got a fantastic staff in finance that works really hard on getting this report done. I've reviewed it. I certainly don't want to skew you in any way, but I think most everything in it is positive. Craig, did you want to make just a few brief comments about it?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I want to thank my staff and the support of Jack and the administration and the board. It's, with having all the support behind us, we can, you know, do a, a good job in maintaining the financials of the county. I would point out that, of course, if you turn to page 17, you can get a good view of kind of the, the changes in the fund balance. It was a pretty significantly, a very good year for the county in, in areas of sales tax and growth in the tax rate and real estate construction around the county. And so the county is in, is in a strong financial position. I'm glad to, happy to report to the board. That you'll be presented with this report at your next board meeting on January 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any question about the process, Craig or I, or anything on that. Okay. I had a busy week last week. Of course, we're winding up the calendar year, getting ready for budget. As I noted at a couple of meetings ago, we're, we're doing some, some really neat things. I was able, had the opportunity last week to be out doing a couple tours. I was out with Commissioner Booker on Friday, had a great time touring his district, looking at some projects we've been working on, which I know he's going to speak on. And just getting out about the different meetings at the end of the year. It feels like we're getting a little bit more normal, even though it may not look that way nationally, but locally feels a little more normal than it did this time last year. I take the opportunity here, last meeting of the year, to thank the, the county staff who work hard every day for the things that we need them for. We've got a great staff. I say it all the time, really first class. We put them up against any staff in the state when it comes to county government. But also want to thank the Commissioners for your time this year, working with us and the things that we've worked on. Pretty difficult budget process, certainly still difficult coming out of COVID and recovery from Florence. I think we've made a lot of progress, and I'm excited about what next year brings. When I hear things like Mr. Wilk's presentation, it shows that we're taking the next step where, where we need to be as a county. And also, just, just kind of wrap that up with economic development. I wish Mr. Wood was here this morning. It's been a fantastic year. I, I pray that Jeff will be able to replicate it again next year. There was just some stars aligned. There's some things we've been working on a long game, which really started back in 2014 when we created the C-1A and how we do economic development. But we've put the things in place, and this board has, has done the things it needs to do to make us in a position to take a hold of projects. And lastly, thank the citizens of Craven County for allowing us to serve them. Too many times that gets forgotten. We, we love the citizens. We love the things that we do. We're a service-based organization, and I think about things here in ZEB talk, and I think about our folks at DSS and Health and Sheriff's Office and a variety of other departments that every day go out there trying to make somebody's life better. So again, thank you to the citizens for, for all that they do for us. So, Mr. Chairman, Merry Christmas to the board. I'm here for questions if you have it. All right, any questions for the County Manager? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Smith, you have anything this morning?
I don't have. I like, Jack would like to thank all of you for your work, for your patience with me and allowing me to serve. I too love the people in Craven County, and I've worked practically all over the county, so I have, I feel a kinship with everyone, and particularly in my district. But I'm grateful to have been able to serve this year, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank the citizens as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Liner?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, if we may, take some of your time. I've got two things for you this morning. First of all, the county and the city of Havelock lost a great individual last Monday. Mr. Henry Sermons passed away last Monday was probably the king in Havelock for a long time and done a lot of things. He worked 20-some years here for the county. He was the first county fire marshal. He started the fire and rescue for the county and for the city of Havelock, where we are today. So it's going to be a tremendous loss for the city of Havelock and for the county. So I appreciate that. Next, Commissioners, I'd like to bring something before the board here. I know I'm talking to the choir, and I know everybody is aware of it, but I think we need to talk about this and bring it up. We're getting ready to go into our third year of this pandemic, and it's been a whirlwind tour of going through, and things have changed, things have moved fast, things are still moving fast. In the past five weeks, I think all of us have kept up, probably not as much as we should, and I'm part of that as well. But we've had a lot of things change in this county and in our surrounding areas. And I just want to bring your attention to it, just to remind you. You know, Cape Carteret last week gave a $2,400 grant, a $2,400 bonus to every one of their employees. The county of Carteret gave a 12% increase to their 911 personnel. Havelock in July gave 3.3% COLA, and this past Monday, they gave another 5% COLA. They are in the process of a pay study that was not going to be out until July, I mean until January, and they're looking to have to look at it again. I've also found out that New Bern is in a study, a pay study, looking at their pay schedule and what they're going to have to do. And I think we all read in the paper that New Bern is paying their employees more than we are. And that hurts, that should hurt all of us. And I'm not faulting this board. I think this board has stood up for the, starting my eighth year on this board with you all, some of you have been on here 10, 12, 18 years. I think this board has done a fabulous job. Like I said, this thing is, this pandemic has caused a lot of issues to move so fast we just haven't thought or kept up with what's going on. Then you come to find out Wednesday, Pine No. Shores authorized a pandemic pay for their employees from $550 to $1,300, times two, and continue until they're out of the pandemic. And again, we've always been, we have always been in this county at the cutting edge, and we've been competitive with anybody around, even our partners in Raleigh, Durham, and Charlotte in some respects. Can we keep up with them? No, but we've always had a competitive edge on our people and everything else. Our residents and our employees are our most precious assets that we can ever ask for. The people in this county have stepped up and stood beside us in thick and thin on everything that we wanted to do, and we should all be appreciative. We've always said that we've probably got the best working team, the best people we've got going in here. But I don't know if you don't, some of you probably do know, but last week, we lost seven people. The things that's going on around us and what's happening, not knowing what's going to even happen this week or what's going to happen in the coming months. If you haven't had a chance, and I know we haven't, but we've been talking about what last year brought us. We had a good year. If you look at where we're standing right now, Craig is getting tired of me calling him weekly to find out where we're going and where we're standing at and everything else, we're running about 14.4% ahead this year than what we were last year, and last year was a good year on that. Last year, when we worked the budget in May, we looked at a CPI of 6.2. This year, right now, as it stands right now, in December, we're running a 6.8 CPI. Most every one of us has been in here where we've had an 18% to 22%, 23% interest rates. I think we're going that way? No, but we've got some CPI that's hitting us up and everything else. And I'd like to put on the table a motion to approve a 5% COLA, starting the first pay period in January, and funds be drawn from the general reserves.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let me understand your motion for 5% COLA, begin January 1, to run through the end of the budget year of June 30, correct?
Yes, sir.
January 1 through June 30. All right, you have the motion and a second discussion from the board.
I have one question. County Manager, I guess it's to you. I, first of all, we're going to vote, obviously, and I agree with the motion, but one question. Based on where we're at, are you comfortable, Mr. County Manager, with 5%? Or should it be 6% or 7% or what? I guess all I'm saying is, are we doing, by doing this, are we solving, and we don't know for sure, we don't know what's going to happen around us, we don't know what the cost of living is going to continue to do. I just want to make sure that we are, by doing this, you're comfortable that we are going to stay competitive, or do we need to go another percent or two? Just a question.
I think it's the right number right now. I talked to Commissioner Liner last week as he was formulating this, and I told him it's probably something that has to be viewed when we get back in budget. We don't know where we're going. It's moving fast, as he said. I think right now, with what you did in July, what this proposal would entail, I think you're where you need to be. I think it solves a lot of those issues. It's not going to solve every issue, but it solves the majority of them. And I think it's something this board is going to have to monitor very closely as we move forward. Again, Commissioner Liner stated some rather large numbers. 12.5% at one time is a big chunk, and it's hard to make up that in two to five increments. Now, were they so far behind it took 12.5 to get there? Yes, that's right. But I think this is the right, the right thing right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There have been numerous studies that have shown that over the past three decades, three decades, that the increases in wages and salaries has not kept up with the cost of living, even though that has increased just a little bit every year over the past three decades. Now COVID has catapulted this issue with an ever-increasing inflation rate. Some of the market pundits say it's going to stabilize and drop, others say it's going to keep on going, we don't know. So I anticipate we will need to look at this issue again in May, when we look at the budget again, to see where we are. But I think it's important, the people who work at the county are the people who look after the 100,000 citizens in this county, day in and day out, and they've done an outstandingly good job. Number one, we need to compensate them for it, and I said this during the last budget cycle. And the other thing is, we need to keep these people who do such an outstandingly good job of looking after us. So I would say, obviously, I'm going to vote for it, I second it, and I'm going to recommend that we revisit this issue during budget.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, based on the competitiveness of the salaries in other counties and in losing our employees, I wholeheartedly agree with him.
So, Mr. Chair, so in July comes, we can look further than what it is today? Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Several things, Mr. County Manager, I just want to make sure that we got an understanding on. Okay, number one, what, do you have any idea what the price tag of this will be, somewhere close?
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren, I think you were prepared to address some of those questions.
Yes, um, do I have to come up to the?
Yes, please.
$943,700 would be for the 12 months, or 12, not 12 months, but 12 pay periods.
Pay periods.
For the remainder of the fiscal year.
All right.
That includes benefits as well.
Okay. And this, this will be, okay, let me get my words right. We, every year during our budget cycle, we approve a COLA for our employees. There are some other entities outside of, such as library, airport, that fall under some of our scope, but they don't necessarily get the COLA unless we allocate it separately. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So what, you know, what's your comments on that?
So, well, I mean, we've always included both of them when we did something, but there's two different processes that have happened, and this is sort of a little bit of a unique time. What I would suggest is, we don't do payroll for the libraries, but we do fund salaries for our local libraries. I would suggest that it's your January meeting, you consider a budget amendment, and I'll work with CAT to get those numbers so that we can include the library folks. From the airport side, we do not fund it, but we do their payroll. So what the airport board would need to do is make this recommendation. If it passes, then we would then, they would need a budget for it, then we would add it into the payroll.
Okay.
I can work with Mr. Shorter once, if you guys choose to do this today.
All right. So is there a consensus that staff bring this back for consideration at our next meeting to consider the libraries and also in discussion with airport?
Meaning as a second, as a second issue in January?
Because this will not cover it.
The motion was already made, wasn't it?
It's going to be a separate, it'll be a complete separate budget amendment directly to the libraries.
Yes, the motion's been made. Just asking for clarification for the future. All right. All right, next thing I want to ask you is, you and I have talked about some time, a salary study. We did one, and this board approved one in 2017?
Yes, you did it in 17, talked about it in 18.
Okay. You and I had talked about, just between the two of us, and right, many discussions in the past year.
Yes, sir.
As we talked about this issue and maybe having to move that up. If the Board of Commissioners vote today to approve this COLA, do you believe, I'm not asking for, you know, a firm commitment, but is your opinion that we could push that salary study off for an additional year?
I think so, sir. And again, as part of the monitoring process that we get to, if the trends that Commissioner Liner referenced earlier continue, we may have to come back and address it sooner, but I believe that you're making a big, a big step today that will hold on, because I think what you and I talked about was accelerating it, right? Accelerating it a year forward to make sure that we can be competitive. I think by doing this, you're probably keeping it on its normal schedule, which is five years.
All right. The only other thing I'll say for those that will, are viewing today and are here in attendance and online, and then may read about this discussion, is several months ago, this board had to consider an increase in salaries for our jailers, because we had a shortage of jailers. It became a great problem. I view this as the same situation today. You know, not going into, well, there you go, I can't ever say that word. Thank you. But there are some areas within county government right now that we've got, everybody's essential, but we've got some very essential personnel that we are, we've lost in the last few weeks because of the competitiveness. And so I see it as the same situation as we had with our jailers. And so this is a price tag, but we pay now, we pay later, one or the other. I think it's kind of the philosophy and what I'm hearing today and so. All right, any other questions, discussion from the board? All right, the motion is for 5% COLA from January 1, 2022, to the end of the budget year of June 30th, 2022, with a price tag of $940,700. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Who's second is that?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Mitchell.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Commissioner Liner, anything else?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick update, I attended a kickoff meeting between county staff and FRC personnel on the Naval X Tech Bridge. It looks very promising.
Yes.
With it, lots of big plans. We hope to see lots of good news next year. There will be an official VIP kickoff event on the 27th of January at the Convention Center. I don't think we have a time yet for it.
No time.
No time, but if you'd put that date on your calendar, I would appreciate it. And also, I was honored to attend the annual Race Across America event at the New Bern National Cemetery on Saturday. There were hundreds of people there. It is, it's solemn, it's heartwarming, and it's moving to see how many of our citizens support that program and support our veterans. So always a part of my holiday season, and if you didn't go this year, I encourage you to go next year because it will make you feel good about this community. Other than that, thank you for the county staff, for everyone who looks after us. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Commissioner McKay?
Yes, I'd just like to piggyback on what George Liner said about Harry Simms. Scott Thomas, the district attorney, and I did attend a funeral for Harry Simms that day, and while we were there, it was, everyone was there, said kind words about our loss. And like, George Liner was a good man in the Havelock, New Bern area, and Friday Pup also attended, so it was good. I'd like to wish everyone here and everyone that's in the county, Christmas, a good New Year, and a prosperous one, and good health. It is more important than money, health and love. So that's all I have to say, but Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Mark?
Yeah, I attended a person town hall meeting, and they also went over their budget, and everything seemed to come out okay on their audit. The hospitals, as of last Friday, had 13 people admitted for COVID. Three of those people were vaccinated, partially vaccinated, and we had one person in ICU. The trend, unfortunately, in the county and all through the state, COVID is increasing. The hospitals are working to keep ahead of it, and I also wish all our constituents and our staff, Commissioners, a Happy Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Booker?
I'd like to bring the Commissioners and the community up to date on a project that has been near and dear to my heart. When I was elected, one of my big concerns was James City. For everybody's information, James City is not a city, it's just a community, but it's called James City, and it has a great historical background. Driving through James City a year or two ago, I guess shortly after I was elected, I just became, I guess for lack of a better word...
I just became, I guess for lack of a better word, blown away by the number of vacant, derelict homes there are in James City. And you don't see this driving on 70. Most of us, you know, we go on 70 back and forth. You see there are a couple of homes that are falling down on the side by the Autozone, excuse me. But until you get back into the neighborhood, you don't realize the seriousness of this situation. So I think COVID and the hurricane kind of got in the way, but this summer, this fall, I did a tour with the help. I was a participant in a tour. County manager, Don, Chad, myself, Lauren went this last time. We toured and we identified by house number 50 houses that were vacant and falling down, some of them in, most all of them in just terrible condition. This affects the people who live next door, who do take care of their homes. There's illegal drug activity going on in some of these vacant homes. There's alcohol, illegal bars, if you want to call it that, that have been taking place in some of these homes. One of my, one of our constituents wrote a letter to two of his neighbors who don't live here but own property and told them what was going on, and those two homes got torn down. So it kind of, you know, just by writing a letter. That happened about maybe a year, year and a half ago. So in September, we made our tour, our initial tour, and identified these 50 homes. I think it was over 50. We came back and the county with the effort that was put forth, Chad, and I don't know who all did it, but they wrote letters to the property owners. Unfortunately, many of these properties are owned by heirs of someone who passed away maybe five, 10 years ago. Some of them have been vacant for 10, 15 years. So they wrote letters, and some of these, a number of these people are out of state. They're in Florida, they're in Maryland, they're various places around the country, California. The results of those letters that went out in October, Jack, September?
Sound right?
Chad?
It's October.
October. Is that four homes are no longer there. They're gone. They've been torn down, a couple of them on Cherry Point Road, one of them right on 70. So we got a little bit of success, about 10% almost of the letters that went out resulted in success. And several other people have gotten back to them saying, we're going to work on it. We're looking for help. Some of them aren't, most of them did not respond to our letter. So we did a second tour, as Jack mentioned, on Friday. And the next step is to identify, see if any of these properties are delinquent on their taxes, and a second letter reminding them with a photograph of the seriousness of the situation. So I just wanted to update everybody, it's a problem. And it's not just James City, but James City is a concentrated problem area. And I appreciate what we've done so far, Chad, Don, Jack, everybody else that's been involved in this, in this effort. We need to keep on it because the people that live there don't deserve what's been going on there. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. And as everybody else said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, a happy, healthy 2022.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, just for a minute here, I've thought about, you know, a year in review to some degree of 2021. And definitely, first we'll say, this board has worked well together, I think. We've had challenges, but we've also had successes this year. COVID has definitely been at the top of the list. That has affected a lot of things. I can remember sitting in the county manager's office at one particular time this year, and we had just, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40 employees out because of COVID and looking at the challenges of how do you keep operations going day to day. And staff was able to do that. We never had to close. Our doors remained open. And that goes for all our departments, our libraries especially too. I look at the loss of some great individuals we've lost across the county. We've lost a number of folks to a number of health issues, but I, just several that crossed my mind, that Ms. Irma Tingle, she was a longtime Craven County employee who worked here, she was right at 100 years old, but she passed this past year. Alderman Dennis Smith from the town of Vanceburg. We had two former Craven County Commissioners pass away this past year, Commissioner Earl Wright, Commissioner Pete Bland, who was also our former sheriff. And then it's just been mentioned about Mr. Henry Sermons and so many others that were instrumental as leaders in this county in so many ways, men and women, that their names are not mentioned here today, but their impact will be forever remembered. This has been a year, though, of success also, I think. I've looked back, we've had Ms. Cat Clowers, in January, she joined as our new regional director. That was something we had worked on for a long time. Here within the county, we welcomed Ms. Lauren Worgo, who was assistant to the county manager. That was something that we had, as a board, desired and worked on for a long time and a great addition to our team here, a new superintendent. And Jack and I have met with the superintendent on a number, Ms. Wendy Miller, Dr. Wendy Miller, on a number of occasions. You know, she's got a lot of struggles too. Not always do we agree with each other, that's for sure. But, you know, when you sit in a room and you hear some of the things that an individual will share with you that they don't share with a normal person of the day-to-day challenges, you know, sometimes you have to take some of these things to heart and a lot of hard decisions sometimes. Wow, hatters, you know? What did that do for our local economy here to save those jobs, new jobs? Folks, I've got family members that work there that were really concerned about, you know, their livelihood. Johnny Marsh, thank you. We appreciate him. He probably will never know how much we thank him for what he did for Craven County, for Eastern North Carolina. This past week, Aeronautical Systems Incorporated, we've had others that have located here. But we've got a lot to be thankful for. You know, so much could else be said this morning. There will be those that, you know, will say, well, why didn't you do this and why didn't you do that? And definitely, you know, hey, as I say all the time, I'm not perfect. I've got a lot of shortcomings. There's a lot of things I need to do and should do. But it's an honor to serve the citizens of this county. We've all expressed that. We thank the citizens of this county for allowing us to serve. And, you know, they're the ones that pay the taxes. They're the ones that allow us to be able to spend their money, and that's what we're doing. And we're trying to do the best job we can in doing that. I'm honored this morning to have with me my only child, Ms. Emily Ryan Jones. She's nine years old. Today she had school, but I told her that I thought this would be more instructional for her than a Christmas party, not that that wouldn't be good, but to be able to attend a commissioners meeting, I used to do that when I was her age too. But I just wanted to say on behalf of my wife, Jennifer, Emily, who's here, and myself, we wish all of you a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and look forward to the new year that is ahead of 2022. And thank you. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners, before we go into closed session? All right?
Make a motion to go into closed session.
If you can, one second. Let me get the general statutes on.
Mr. Chairman, the statutory reference is 143, 318, point 11, A3 and A6, and the motion needs to reflect that for subsection three, attorney-client privilege, we are going to discuss the case of Craven County v. Redwood Terrace LLC, which is pending in Craven County Superior Court. And I'll give this to Nan since she'll have it.
So you made that motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify for saying aye. Opposed, we will be going into closed session, but I would ask for about a five-minute recess.